Can we get Mr. Edwin to have a seat, if you will?
Okay, we'll get him.
Thank you, sir. That's all right. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the January 16th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the -- we did not have minutes on January 2nd. So I think our last minutes were then December 19th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th?
It's a move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none or all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report, payment of the bill.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Everything looks pretty well, in good order? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you notice that million plus?
I did.
Did you?
I saw it.
Well, there.
Well, what I noticed was our sewer fund went down, or the loan payment went down considerably. Very good. I wanted to mention tonight, we have Councilman Bill Kous in the audience tonight. Thank you, Bill, for coming into our town this evening. And we had a -- if anyone had a question, we've got Dave Bestie sitting in for Don Downs tonight, our town attorney. It's nice to have a firm. Very good. Lou, you're on. No, actually, we've got a presentation. Ms. Jennifer Padgett. Come on down. Tell us what you're doing. Cecil County Health Department Division of Health Promotion.
Good evening, everybody. This is the afternoon. I'm Jennifer Patterson in the Cecil County Health Department. I'm a community health investigator, and I'm going to go over some information with you. I do want to know that I'm not by myself tonight. So I do have some high school students from the county that also would like to share information, and they're also with their coalition facilitator, Tania Benson, and they're going to kind of introduce themselves afterwards because they have a little bit of information prepared for you as well.
Very nice. I want to know your names and what high school you go to.
I'm Kelsey Meese. I'm from Bo Manor.
Very good. Great high school.
I'm Katie Crouch. I go to Northeast High School.
Not as good. Great high schools. We love all the high schools.
Not yet.
I see a little man who graduated.
He graduated.
Yeah. That's why he said that.
So, anyway, so I'm going to try and go through and just share some of the information, and then we'll do our thing. And, okay, so about 10 years ago, there was not a lot of alternatives out there for tobacco. It was just a traditional cigarette. And things have changed quite a bit, and there's a lot of alternatives out there. And I know that you have heard me speak about electronic smoking devices. And we're going to look at some of the changes in this tobacco landscape and kind of look at what's going on. So just fair, we're going to just have to start with making sure that we're all on the same ground floor, so. So electronic smoking devices are battery-operated devices that allow a user to inhale an aerosol which contains nicotine, flavoring, and other additives. They vary in design. Here, there's about 500 brands and 7,000, 700 flavors. They do come up with new flavors about every month. And examples of flavors are cotton candy, strawberry, and chocolate. In 2013, 2014, 81% of the youth that use e-cigarettes cited the availability of these flavors as the primary reason for use. And if you go to the next slide. Advertising to youth. One of the things that we have been told by e-liquids companies is they're not targeting youth. But in May of 2018, which is just last May, the Food and Drug Administration and the Federal Trade Commission issued warning letters for selling e-liquids with labeling that resembles kid-friendly food products such as juice boxes, candies, and cookies. So if you go to the next slide, you can take a closer look at this. So this looks like vanilla wafers and juice box. See if you can tell the difference which is an e-liquid versus which one is the actual product. So this is why the warning letters were issued. Go to the next one. So what is the problem with using e-liquids? Well, we know the vapor is full of nicotine, full of heavy metals, cancer-causing chemicals, and it is not a harmless water vapor. Diacetyl is a flavoring component that is linked to irreversible lung damage and scarring to the smallest tissues in the lung, which means that you get kind of a COPD effect, and it could actually cause your lung to collapse if you can't get enough air into those areas. Nicotine use, we know damages an adolescent brain, damages adolescent brain development by interrupting formations of circuits that are linked to attention and learning, and increases the susceptibility to addiction, and not just nicotine addiction. Opioid addiction, marijuana addiction, there's all types of research, and we have, it tends to be four to five times more likely that they will lead to any of these behaviors from using nicotine at a young age. And I like to show people what happens, so if you can hit the next one, it should expand. This is adolescent brain, and what you're looking at is a brain spec imaging scan, a single photonic emission-computed tomography. Healthy brain is on this slide. It's smooth. You can see there's a lot of blood flow, there's loss of activity. The cut of sheen effect is what's happening when you get low functioning activity, and there's some damage going on, where there's some connections that are not being made. And this is just after three years of use, and this is with just looking at nicotine through smoking. So this is what we know for nicotine. So if you go to the next one. No, you go in. So we know overheating and exploding are things that happen, and there are a lot of different ones that happen out there, and for a variety of reasons. If you use it as the user, as recommended, and/or if you manipulate it, the risk is higher. This is, this young lady is from Perryville, and she had 15% of her body burned, and this is just a vague news story that was just recent about a burn sufferer. We're going to kind of just skip over that one just a little bit today because I want to give some of the youth here a chance to talk about it. And so we'll just click twice through that if you can, Katie. So where are we with the high school students in Maryland? I usually use the 12th grade as marker, and you can see electronic smoking devices is the most popular for tobacco product among you, and it increases with grade level. So 17.7 in Maryland at 12th grade for ESD use. And if you go to the next one, you can see Cecil County. So Cecil County, we're up in the corner, it's 19.3, so we're a little higher than the state average. And so that is, something that we're very concerned about, we are in this tier right here. So we're not in the highest tier, but we're in the second highest tier. If you go to the next slide. We just got the new numbers. In 2018, the National Youth Tobacco Survey showed that throughout the United States, and this is the most recent numbers we have, we don't have local numbers yet for 2018, the numbers of U.S. high school students who reported current e-cigarette use increased by 78% just in one year. And we know it's not only just, and we know for middle schoolers, that it was 48%. Those are pretty significant numbers. And throughout the study, you're going to see it's suggested and then it's related to Juul use and the popularity that increases with that. Okay, so Juul, if you don't remember, is a USB lighting device. And it is a vaporizer that looks like a USB drive. It's a popular pod mod. It's pre-filled. It's a delivery device that mimics the physical and sensory experience of a cigarette. And this is just an example of what it is, but I'm going to give you a quick four-minute just kind of updating what's going on with that.
A question you might want to be asking your kids, especially after you've seen this next story, is your child Juuling in school? Is e-cigarettes a page for adults who are trying to help them quit tobacco products? These are now booming in popularity, especially among teenagers.
What is this? A Juul? You're supposed to be 18 before you even know what a Juul is.
That's a Juul.
I love them well. You're like, slow with it, and then like, snuck comes out. When parents ask, it might go something like this. What is this?
A flash drive.
Right. You don't have to look far to learn how to hide it. This YouTuber cut his backpack strap. To show how to Juul in school. Where do you see it? Where do you see it, Stu?
Like, the bathroom.
What about in class?
That was a girl, she didn't help us, she just like blew it down her shirt.
There are many e-cigarettes and vapes on the market, but this is so widespread among teens. Juuling is now a verb. This is the most popular with the kids.
Yes.
The nicotine, in one tool pod, the equivalent of a pack of cigarettes, delivering a quick buzz, sometimes too powerful. Teens have a name for that: nicotine.
We've never seen a trend like this before, so probably reminds the student body that only a third of the students have participated in it.
When these McLean High School juniors polled their classmates for a cover story, two-thirds admitted to Juuling, one-fifth confessed to doing it every day. Not only is the Juul easy to hide and play in sight, so is the hide.
With Juuls, it's what's been described as a five-minute buzz that keeps you entertained in class. If you're not, your eyes aren't red, your speech isn't slurred.
The kids all know, the parents do not. In January, the McLean PTSA held its best attended meeting in two years.
Here on my computer, this USB drive I have is not an actual USB drive, that's my target.
Fairfax Police reported interventions for vaping have already doubled last year's total.
Back last, they blow down a form, and it's all.
The school's principal has no doubt: teens are the target.
These slim devices, you know, being able to plug something in, that a teenager would like, being geared target.
The FDA did make it illegal to sell to kids.
We will redouble our efforts to protect kids from all nicotine-containing products.
But it also moved the compliance deadline for new products from 2018 to 2022 to foster innovation for forms of nicotine delivery that are potentially less harmful than cigarettes. Why isn't the government stopping it?
This is a classic case of the government dropping a ball.
The campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, Matt Myers, wants the FDA to regulate these products now so we know what's in a Juul and what's being done so it doesn't appear to kids.
The developers have to prove under current law that before you introduce a new product like this, that its sale marketing is actually appropriate for the protection of the public health. It means that we're not addicting millions of kids across the country with an nicotine product.
You believe we are.
I believe we are.
You know how many warnings there are on a pack of cigarettes, and I found one warning from the state of California on this Juul package. It's tiny, it's on the back, it's about the risk of cancer and birth defects. One Juul pod, by the way, as we showed you earlier, is the equivalent, in terms of nicotine, of a pack of cigarettes. It can take a long time to get through a Juul pod, it just depends on the user.
Are these in class? And all of you know about this?
I mean, look how easy it is to just hide it in your hand, or put it in your sleeve, or stick it in your pants pouch, or hide it in your backpack.
Wow.
Greatest for me.
I owe you.
Well, quickly, though, what we have to say, we did talk to the people at Juul, and they tell us that their mission is to eliminate cigarette smoking, and they strongly oppose the use of this product by minors. And they say a lot more. You can read the entire two-page statement, it is attached to the story on our ABC News app. And I do credit them, they declined an interview, but they did answer our questions.
That's good. All right, here we'll take a shot.
Thank you.
So, did you pause? No, exactly what it is. If we can go to the next slide. That's, I don't know why it's green enough, but it's just to let you see the, some fun flavors. And just give it that, hit that again, we're out of there. Okay, so just to remind you, so one of the things that they may not be realizing is that when they finish one Juul pod, they've finished a pack of cigarettes, not one cigarette. And this is Juul, right here, this teal. This is a cigarette delivery, this is nicotine delivery, and this is a traditional cigarette. This here is all the other types of electronic cigarettes, and you can see Juul is pretty high up. So as far as absorption of nicotine. And it's about 0.7 milliliters of e-liquid with 5% nicotine by weight. And we know that it's much higher than the rest, so. So Juul's only been on the market since about 2015. It was launched in 2015, and you can see how the numbers rise. It's accounted for 60% since 2015 of the sales of e-cigarettes from the retail market. Can you go to the next one? So when we were trying to get some numbers, I'm running through, we're waiting for some of the other numbers to come out from our traditional sources. The Truth Initiative conducted a national study in April 2016 that revealed youth are aware of Juul, but many do not know they contain nicotine. Of the Juul users, 63% have no idea that it contains nicotine. So where are they getting Juuls from? So they asked Juul users who used in the last 30 days where they obtained the devices. 74% was retail stores, 52% was social sources, and 6% was online purchase. Of the 6% online purchase, 89% were successful, and this year it became legal to purchase Juul and other e-cigarettes online, and that's going to be a primary way that they're doing that. So it's a concern because it's difficult to monitor that. So what are we doing to address this? We're looking at awareness, we're looking to increase awareness about the risk of ESD Juul use through media campaigns and different things. And hopefully, some of the youth up here, Kelsey and Katie, helped work on a project where they actually created PSAs. And then we also have, we also educate youth and their families about that, and we try and outreach to get the fact out. There's an imbalance of information, pretty much we have with e-cigarette companies and e-liquid companies want us to know, but we don't have a balance on the other side. So that's what we're trying to do, is balance out the information so people can make informed decisions. We're providing funding to organizations to address these misperceptions about e-cigarettes and supporting changes with tobacco-free policies to make sure we're incorporating ESDs and Juul use. We are also working with retailers about tobacco control laws, and we're also enforcing those through some tobacco compliance checks. So I have some very distinguished guests with me today, and they're going to share information, and I'm not sure who's to go first, so I'll let them work that out, and I'm going to sit down and let them have a show.
Okay, I'm going to remain sitting, so it's my computer's at my eye level, if that's okay? Do you prefer me to sit right there?
Sure.
Yeah, I can break your phone, everyone can hear me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you finished with the overhead? Ms. Padgett, are you finished with the overhead?
Oh, yes, I am. Yes, yes.
I didn't want it in her eyes.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 I don't want it in her eyes. You don't have to move anything, I just didn't.
Oh, I didn't, you had control. No, definitely.
Okay, so to introduce myself, my name is Katie Crouch. I attend Northeast High School in School Tech, Libra, Elton. So I attend the Youth Coalition. So to start, our Youth Coalition is held at the YES Building in Elton. And if you don't know what the YES represents and means, you can have a source. And to bring that down, we all know our main focus is to support our youth community. So that's what the Y is, Youth. Empowerment is the second word, the letter, is the process of becoming stronger, more confident, and empowering to do or change something, which in our case, our empowerment is to strengthen our youth and make our youth more competent and becoming successful, since we have to rely on our upcoming generation to make the changes that we need with our community. We're the ones who plan, silence, but make the next step, or get the voice from our leaders, people that have a better chance of being listened to. Also, what I've learned about YES is that they offer several programs from children to young adults who are in need of their support. Programs that are specifically designed, in this case, for children who have a parent death, or parents incarcerated, they are more vulnerable to these types of things, like drugs, nicotine, and all that stuff. They may not receive this type of support, so I found that relieving. I went on the website, and I found a lot of information. It's also really an honor to be a part of this because being an adolescent myself helps me understand the dangers and risks that come with this, and how my community does a lot for us, for me, like specifically me, because I have learned a lot through this journey. Now, onto the more important part of my speech. I had attended the town hall in Northeast last week. Before that, I came up with the idea to interview my peers, like just a few boys who went to my school, about their Juul use, because I knew they had a history of it or had current experience with it, and I got some information out of them. I used that information then, but I interviewed a different peer, someone I was closer with in my home school. I sit, have lunch with her every other day, and I do notice she does get up a lot to go to the bathroom, she does Juul, she offers me all the time, being like, I'm her friend, I don't associate that with her, I do not encourage it to her. So she's the same age as me, she did give me complete permission, she would show this information today, of course, I'll keep her name confidential. I asked her first how much she spends on her Juul. She said anywhere from $35 to $45. The pot alone, which holds the nicotine and the juice in it, is around $5. She said, quote, "It is all about who your source is, how cool you are with them." This is indicating that she is not buying directly from her store, she's buying from someone who is old enough to buy, and they are selling it to them, which is, I feel a little concerning. But the more I asked her what she likes about it, she says, quote, "The way it hits my throat." I have no, I have no relation to this, but I can infer that the chemicals have a sensation when you consume it, and it hits, satisfies the consumer. That then sparked my curiosity with like the flavoring and stuff, since she said she liked the way she hid it, like all that stuff. She said her favorite was mango. And just for her to say that her favorite was that, made me realize that these flavors are basically advertising the minds of adolescents into thinking that Juuling is all about the taste of it, how it makes you feel, like not knowing the health risks of it, none of that. So, for the more, I asked her of any trends that come with Juuling, because when I had interviewed my peers last time, like the other two boys, they said there was this trend going around, how fast you can consume a one Juul pod, which is equivalent to one pack of cigarettes in one sitting. He said the most he's ever seen spread it on is 12 minutes. So that kind of sparked more interest in what other trends are there. She said there's a thing called double blinker, which is when you hold down the button that allows you to inhale and hold it for as long as you can until it stops, and it makes you temporarily dizzy. And that's a trend that's going around. A peer influenced her to start one year ago. She's been addicted ever since, she admitted to it. She said, just the other day, she said she hadn't hit it, they call it hitting the Juul, in two days, and she said she felt, quote, crappy, but that's what that is, irritable, drowsy, fatigued, because those are the signs that come with nicotine withdrawal or whatever. She also mentioned it makes her reeves, and that's, she says she doesn't want to stop because she does feel the pain, but she doesn't take it as seriously as though she would. To sum up everything I have shared, you can dig that, the adolescents are trying to live up to the Juuling standard. It's a standard now, it's kind of like a lifestyle. I see it all the time in my school. People were feeling it on the buses, like, hey, I, for example, I heard this boy saying, I'll buy it, I buy it off people like so much. They buy it for the less price in school, like not $35, $45, it's like 15, 10. Also, they're consuming like their time doing this, like in class, they're more worried about like when they're going to Juul next, like how are they going to hide it from the administrators, the teachers, so they're not focused on their education, they're not worried about what they're trying to do, and like they're just worried about Juuling. And I feel we need to do, or ask community, is kind of like, I know they did this last year, they did make it aware to teachers' administrations, but I was in like a faculty meeting, I believe I asked my teacher if they had heard of it before. So what I feel they shouldn't kind of make it more like, more often, maybe to update the administration and teachers what's going on. So if they hear of this, see, don't know what this little thing is, they will know what to do. They need to be more informed, and I noticed my peers have almost no idea what this thing is. So that's what I also wanted to mention. Just like the Alestrol, has anyone heard of Alestrol? So I feel like it should be just as important as our safety, as our health. So, and it's become immensely popular, and it's very interesting. So thank you for your time listening to me. And she will be mentioning, also, the Youth Coalition can incur also perspective on stuff like Juul.
All right, while I get the chair out. Oh, yeah, so I was out in Garrett County like back in 2017, and boy, you can tell how much vape is circulating. And that was, you know, that was almost two years ago, so I can't imagine like now. But anyway, I'm going to stick to what I wrote. Most of what I have is personal, a lot of sports, school anecdotes, so, there we go. So vaping has been growing at an assumption rate over the past decade, especially among teens, the numbers have skyrocketed. The reason for this is deeply rooted in the low perception of harm that many have for it. It's scary to see these vape products infiltrating my school. It's very unsettling to watch the valedictorian sucking on a flash drive, or to glimpse a fellow teammate exhaling a cloud of mist on the bus ride to a game. Cecil County schools are so small, so personal, so intimate, amplifying this, the closeness of this issue to every student. We sit next to it every day in class. It's the mist hitting the floor in the bathroom stall, and it's the clouded elephant in every crowded classroom. Bo Manor has restricted bathroom access drastically over the last month since Christmas break. We now stand in single-file lines to use the toilet while the kids, the policy was intended to catch Juuling, simply vape after school now. Access is key. Restricting access to vape is the plan, not restricting bathroom access. Let's continue to ensure that these products are locked behind the 18-year-old counter for a few more years. Keep it out of the high schools. To end on a hopeful note, though, Drug-Free Cecil has hosted over three Youth Coalition meetings at the YES Building, Youth Empowerment Source. A group of 20, give or take, high schoolers has come together at these meetings, drafted ideas, and implemented solutions to the issues we've talked about today on localized levels in their schools. PSAs that we created at North Bay are filmed on, that we filmed at North Bay are aired on the announcements in the mornings. We post anti-drug slogans on our new Twitter page, and we also are planning some health fair and rally events for the springtime. Now, we also have chosen, I believe, nine students to bring to CADCA, which is Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America. They're hosting a forum in February, and we will bring nine students. Here we will visit our congressman on Capitol Hill. We will attend learning sessions, and thanks to funding from the Health Department, we will be enjoying the Super Bowl in the conference of the Gaylord Sports Bar. So after the conference, these trained high schoolers will be Cecil County's first generation of a new program. A new program to teach every sixth grader in the county over the counter medicine safety in November, when they attend North Bay, through the Voice in November, when they attend North Bay, through the voices of these high schoolers. We are so lucky to be able to witness this extreme and much needed increase in youth involvement within the coalition. So, that's all I have. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day. Are there any questions that we can ask?
Yes, Katie, you said that your friend likes mango, so evidently, did she, or do students, normally spread it with a taste in order to get to one that they actually like?
She said she went through coffee, cream, tobacco, cucumber. I'll give you a list of stuff that I went with the one that she is on now, because she is now perfectly addicted to it.
It's very interesting also, because the different flavors have stronger smells. So, like, for example, cotton candy, if somebody like makes cotton candy flavoring, you can smell it for like a while longer than like cucumber or something. So, a lot of that, like normally people that bring it to school have like cucumber or mango, like the lighter flavors that don't linger in air as long. So, that's definitely a factor, I think, in choosing, choosing your flavor.
So, in your opinion, with what you just said as far as the flavoring and smelling it, do you think the teachers realize who are vaping before?
Most definitely, yes.
Were in school?
I think they're not well-trained enough to know exactly what to do. They see it, and they're like, they kind of freeze out because they've never seen that type of thing before, like why would adolescent be bringing that into school or causing trouble? So, that's why I had mentioned that we need to make it more public to the administrators and teachers, so they know what to do. They don't, are they going to just take it from them? They don't know. And I know it's very obvious that these kids also.
Is there a plan for it?
I was getting ready to email later on this week, who was it? Doctor, Mr., well, Leika. He held his first presentation at Elton for, his idea was to make it known to the teachers. And I was going to email him to see if he wanted to do something like that, or prepare an event or a time out of the day for our school, since we're currently in my school, to get that going, so the teachers will be aware of it. So, I have a plan within myself, but I hope to be a part of whatever programs there are.
It sounds like a great plan, especially if you can, you know, get involved with the faculty in each of the high schools or middle schools. You said, one of you said something about being a low perception of harm, and I truly feel personally that that's the whole key, that they think it's just a cool thing to do without realizing that how addictive it is. And for them to be educated on the addiction of it, hopefully would scare some of them from trying it, but you got to hit it early, and a plan too for those who are addicted that they can go for help.
Yeah, and the peer I interviewed, she's a close friend of mine, so I sadly seen this happening, and I had known from my mom on Ozipnoide, she had too many peers influencing her. I was one against many, so there's not much I could do. That's why I wanted to be a part of this.
Well, good luck. I think you should get all the support you can get from that, and I wish there's something we can do to help you.
I was really impressed with both of your presentations. I thought I've learned a lot in sixty-two years in my life. I thought I could go and just give the big management if I can on this one, in the school system. I was a board member, and I want to suggest that I would have you and your instructors to go to the Board of Education, set up a time to go talk to the board, and then get it administered to follow through from there, and I guarantee they would be more than happy to hear this presentation. The one thing that I did listen to when you mentioned about the students doing the vaping on the buses, and I know there's a lot of cameras on buses now, have they been aware and monitoring the bus cameras to see this?
Recently, yes, our bus that travels back and forth from the school to town, we have had about three students suspended for that cause. I think it's getting more, they're being more aware of it, but I think it's still a lot of.
And I know, Katie, you can't answer all these questions because it's out of your hands, but the first suggestion I would say is, go to the board and set up a time to give this presentation to the board, and I guarantee they would probably welcome this work.
I'd like to just jump in and just let you know, we are working with, we have just recently started working with Cecil County Public Schools Administration, and I have presented to the principals and the assistant principals, and we are also, they're going to be working with us. We're going to have a meeting on January twenty-second, and they will be present there as well, and we're going to be sharing information from the youth perspective with them. They've heard information from a health perspective, but now we need to look at a youth perspective, and we're working through it. And you should know that these are amazing young ladies. They've actually developed a logic model to help the county reduce vaping. Kelsey and Katie have been amazing to work with.
Well, yeah, I want to also say, you were saying you're doing PSAs for like morning announcements and things in school, but have you been on Cecil TV yet?
So, we, so last year, this is our, I think, our third year doing PSA. Last year, we went to North Bay on a youth leadership summit, which is where we kind of met, and the PSAs that we filmed there were fine tuned, and we got a contract with Comcast. So, those PSAs from twenty eighteen, no, from seventeen, were sent out over a year and shown in thousands of times, which was beyond surprising, actually, because we did that. So, this year, the goal, because we had North Bay in November, we are still fine tuning PSAs, and I think Virgil Boyd-Saul, our leader of the drug free coalition, he will be moving the Comcast if he has it already, to finalize the new contract of the new wave of PSAs from that move on.
Any way we can help for here. That's a fantastic job.
Sure did.
Three proud of us. Okay, Lou, you're up.
I'm going to let them get their.
Yeah, that'd be great. Do you want to, do you want to get your computers down? Have you seen any of your.
We're ready, Lou. Okay, the first item I have is Resolution R one dash two thousand nineteen. The town acquired a people property located three twenty-four, probably George Creek, months ago. And I believe it's the intent of the board to sell the property. In order to do that, we need to declare a surplus and important deterrent, I mean deterrent requirements, and this resolution accomplishes that purpose. It allows us to sell, whether approved by the legislature or by, it applies to parcel two eighty-one, tax map three ten. As described as lot twenty-six, it's point one four nine acres, a not very large, three twenty-four hundred, we're keeping Elton Heights, and subscribe to D book for three two, four zero five, this is Kenny Graham, I'll go get a appraisal on our land, figure value is fifty-eight thousand, according to the department's assessment, so I'd say that's their, that's value, or get an appraisal, and then once I do get an appraisal, I'll proceed in some manner of fashion to sell the property.
Okay, do we have a, do we have a motion to accept Resolution R one dash two thousand nineteen?
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion on that.
Yes, once we get the appraisal, will we get that, and then also will the cost involve for us?
Gina asked, once you get the appraisal, we'd like to see it, and also follow the cost.
That we've incurred. Take care of that. Okay, thank you.
Look, we paid an attorney, and I think that's all, for the property, and of course, and then we paid contractor to demolish it, so there is, there is some costs involved. Way below fifty-eight thousand dollars, I can say that, so as soon as I get the appraisal, I'll put all those costs together and send it to the.
Thank you.
All in favor? Motion carries. Next item I have, sick leave donation policy. I think the board got a copy of this. This is a voluntary, this policy allows employees voluntarily donate time into a bank and/or other employees under certain criteria to withdraw from that bank under certain circumstances, particularly if it's an emergency medical situation. The employees could donate up to one week or forty-two hours for a fiscal year. Employees who wish to donate, they meet the eligibility requirements, can withdraw up to four weeks or one hundred and sixty-eight hours from the bank approval, and under certain circumstances, an additional two weeks, and this is any rolling twelve-month period. There's criteria based in here for what they get used for, and only could be used for their own or family's emergency medical situation. And they must exhaust all their own personal leave, vacation, or sick leave prior to getting leave from this bank. I would suggest that the board authorize this policy to go forward, and if so, we'll begin to solicit donations from employees for the bank.
We have a motion to accept the sick leave donation policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
Yes, Louis, when will the employees be in front of this policy?
Tomorrow.
All of them.
Well, every employee that I can be aware of, because we send it out to everyone in all the departments, and then each department will disseminate that information. Probably the police department will know about it quick, and Public Works sends it down to everyone else down there, and then they can disseminate the information. Administratively, everybody up here will know about it from what.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is fireworks extravaganza agreement. The board discussed this at the workshop, and I believe agreed that we would have a two-year contract with fireworks extravaganza for seventeen thousand five hundred annual for a thirty to thirty, thirty-two minute fireworks display, of course, obviously it's down in Meadow Park. The dates will be June, July fourth and July fifth, rainy days. But we'll have it for a two-year period, which each be seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. So, I think the board made a tentative decision to select that protocol, so I recommend that they do so.
We have a motion to accept the fireworks agreement, two years. Second. Motion and second, discussion.
The only thing I wanted to bring out, I met with the Upper Chesapeake Community Band, and they would like to perform at our Fourth of July free of charge. There's about thirty-eight, forty members, and perform patriotic music. I love that idea. You love it? I do.
Bring them on.
I always thought we should have music.
And I think the, only other comment I'd like to make is during the workshop, we did discuss with the fireworks group about last year, it seemed like it was a little shorter, but we also know that we kind of rushed them to finish it up before the thunderstorms hit. So, hopefully, if there's no thunderstorms in the area, then we'll get that full thirty-minute display. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Yeah, I have a number of alcohol waivers here. The Elk Alliance request for the waiver alcohol prohibition rose of Mayor Alt, the rose to mayor on February twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
We have a motion to accept the request for waiver.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
The next waivers for the Department of Public Health of Cecil County, request for waiver of alcohol prohibition, your annual chili cook-off event on February sixteenth.
We have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
And a second. Any discussion on chili cook-off? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Here we have the Elk Alliance again for alcohol prohibition waiver, proceed Patrick State Downtown Event, March fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth.
So moved.
Second. And a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
See, another waiver for the Elk Alliance Citizen of the Year banquet, it's on March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. So, we have a motion to first Citizen of the Year.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
The Elk Alliance request waiver of alcohol downtown court shows on April twenty-fifth, May twenty-third, June twenty-fourth, June twenty-seventh, fifth, and August twenty-seventh. Just like to correct, it's June twenty-seventh, I think you said the twenty-fourth. So, I'd say June twenty-fourth, yeah, or June twenty-seventh.
And all of these on a Thursday? Right, General?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the last is for the Elk Alliance waiver for fall pest events for September twentieth and twenty-first.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I have a couple, we got some reappointments to the Board of Housing Appeals for the term of February one through two thousand nineteen through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Just them collectively, if I could, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Willard Bryant, Ms. Sarah Guns, and Mr. Richard Lemon to continue the terms.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for serving.
Yes.
Okay, I had a couple things here. At the workshop, we did talk about space requirements for the, our future space requirements, and Lou, I hope that you're on top of the department heads to kind of give us back some feedback on that for us. That would be great to know. Also, I'm not sure if we've got the entry agreement yet for the armory?
Yes.
We did get it? When we schedule a trip, I think the board would like to go in there again also and take a look, and I'd like to invite Katie from the Cecil Way to tag along if you'd like. Would you mind doing that?
Yeah, what about you?
Very good. Thank you. So, I'd like to invite you to go through with us. Those were the two things that were on my agenda. Anything else? Mary, Gary, you're on.
There's some grand openings happening, and I just wanted to announce because the public is inviting Nationwide Mortgage Company at Cecil Main Street. And you know what I did? I didn't put down the date. It says Friday, or, I'll put that on my calendar, don't mind.
It is Friday.
Friday, January eighteenth, and that's at one P M. And then, for those of you who haven't been in there, including myself, you bet your axe, the new place out at Elton Crossing where you throw axes at a bullseye, I guess? Has anyone been out there yet?
You bet your axe.
Yeah. They're having a luncheon, and that is on Thursday, January twenty-fourth at eleven A M for their grand opening, and then Cecil Print, and they are Friday, January twenty-fifth at four. twenty-fifth at four P M., and that's one forty East Main Street. So if anybody could make it, um, we always want to welcome our new businesses to town. Glad they chose Elton. Isn't that it?
Jean?
Um, nothing tonight.
Charles?
Uh, yes, Mary J, you might be familiar with this more than we. And suppose to talk with Jean Manon. I think there's a lady in the audience asked, uh, what is the become of Wal-Mart? Has there been any change with that? Or do you know? Or is that gonna be islands, islands?
Uh, the last discussion I heard was Ollie's.
I had, uh, four more. That's the last I heard. I have contacted him several times, and he hasn't gotten back to me because I did get someone from Pennsylvania that might want the old-fashioned boat area. And I need the square footage and the rent, and, um, it would be great for Elton, so.
And Elton Diner?
Elton Diner was, there was a rumor IHOP coming in, and I did call the owner, and they said that. But that was just a few weeks after the Elton Diner closed. And then the for rent sign went back up. Um, his secretary, who I've talked to several times, an attorney from Philadelphia into that building, um, has said that, uh, she's still hearing IHOP. But I, we haven't heard anything at town, and we don't think that.
Okay, thanks. How about Lundy?
Oh, yes.
Actually, there was a couple other things I wanted to mention that, uh, at Cecil Night in Annapolis last Thursday. Uh, we went down to Annapolis. Actually, I went with, uh, Ed Ginder, who's on the planning board, and we went down with, uh, Bob Metley, and, uh, of course, Bill Couse was also there. A great group from Cecil County was there for the Annapolis night, and, uh, I think we represented very well. Uh, I also wanted to mention tomorrow night at seven o'clock is our first Parks and Rec Board. Uh, so, uh, the group will be gathering in here at seven o'clock. And, um, uh, I'm planning on attending, uh, just to kind of lay down the, the game plan for that, right? Also, uh, I'll be attending the Maryland Municipal League, uh, winter event, uh, in Rockville on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Uh, so then I'll, I'll make it back for the twenty-seventh, and I'd like to invite everyone to the Immaculate Conception School on the twenty-seventh, Sunday the twenty-seventh. And we're gonna have waffles and chicken, and, uh, the mayor's gonna make his world famous sausage gravy. So if you'd like to attend, uh, I'll be making it, uh, at the church.
What is your, what time?
Uh, it, it would start at eight A M. Eight A M. on Sunday the twenty-seventh. And also, uh, we have the Mayor's Conference in Annapolis on February, uh, on, actually January thirty-first and February first. I'll be in Annapolis, uh, representing the town of Elton.
Who do you say you want to be making?
The twenty-seventh, the world famous sausage gravy.
Okay.
And, and I think there's been a few here that's had my sausage gravy.
And it hasn't been there in the last couple of months either.
That's right.
Yeah, where have you been?
I'm bringing it. I'm bringing it to the church.
To the church, near where BFW is?
I will be going to BFW too. Okay. This is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor for the public. Anyone have anything to say this evening?
What were you trying to tell me?
I, I think in Parks and Rec, the Dodge Report meeting is at six-thirty, not seven.
Six-thirty.
Yes.
Very good. Yes, ma'am?
The neighbors have been complaining and contending courts about break-ins in their cars. They want more police control. And I'm amazed because we have so many officers living in the neighborhood that, you know, we have as many break-ins as we do.
It's amazing. There's a lot of police cars parked over there that live at those residences. And, uh, what we, well, I think the chief has been aware of that.
We are.
Yeah, I told him to come. That one's taken long. That one's sleeping warm.
Very good.
They might be unfortunate, so.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none? Nothing? Ed Ginder?
The two lights on the North Street Bridge coming into town. They're not, they're not in the half of town at night.
Michelle has checked.
And it's always the blind spot, right behind the Mac and Septon School. The first two standards, full standards, the lights are out.
The one, the one light below the bridge, Michelle has checked into, that had some problems. The other one, uh, should get there.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.
Paul, let's get talking to Stan.
Gee.
Give him a second.
Maybe you'll see.
No, just not at all.
And he did really well. I mean, this is July five, so he did perfect. Gets me out of here.
Two hours.
We got this.
He's a real person.
Over there.
I tore the Valera over.
That was the big question.